Good evening, I'm Mayor Mark North. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Hudsonville City Commission dated October 10th, 2023. Would everybody please stand for the badge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bullface?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeBray?
Here.
Grope?
Here.
Larrar?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Now there'll be a moment of silence. I think, as many of us, the one thing dwelling on my mind recently is the events happening overseas, not just Ukraine but in Israel and in Gaza. And I thank God every day that I get to be privileged to have borne with citizenship of a great country. So a moment of silence, please. Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to address the commission? Seeing and hearing none, there are a couple people in the audience that I would like to make sure they get acknowledged. Andrew, I would invite you to introduce your family, please.
All right. I'm Andrew Smith, the new Finance Director here with the City of Hudsonville. And tonight, my wife and daughter Maggie and Fern came to say hi to everybody and just get a feel for how things run around here.
We are uniquely honored to have your presence on the commission. It's nice to know there's one more veteran up here with me. And we appreciate your family joining us here tonight. And Fern, may you get your homework done tonight, okay? Very well, thank you. Nice to have you here tonight. I understand that you got to take off. I also recognize a member from the Planning Commission, Jeremy Camp, sitting in to view the City Commission tonight. Is there anybody else in the audience who chooses to address the commission? Hearing none. We have consent agenda items. There are four. Minutes of the City Commission regular session dated September 12th. Minutes of the City Commission special session dated September 26th. Minutes of the Terror Square Advisory Board meeting dating August 9th. And minutes of the Planning Commission regular session dated September 20th. Are there any changes to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, it's been moved and supported. I know that quite often, if the commissioners are like me, don't actually read all the minutes to details. But I would encourage you all to go back and read the Planning Commission minutes in regards to Terra...
Station.
Station. Because there are a lot of details in there the Planning Commission's working through. And I would expect that many of the commissioners, including myself, will get queried by the public about some of those details and how the decision-making was done. So if you haven't really gone back and read, that would be one set of minutes that I would encourage you to read. Are there any changes to the commission's as so presented, to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a...
You don't have to.
No roll call. I should know this after nine years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The consent agenda items carry. Moving on to item number six, new business in public safety. September Public Safety Report. Fire Chief, you're up.
Good evening. For the month of September, we had 68 calls for service, so another busy month. That brings our year-to-date call total to 469. So we are tracking probably 17%, 18% ahead of last year, so more calls. Calls of note, as I wrote in the report there, in what a 10-day span, we had three cardiac arrests. We can go months and months without having cardiac arrest, and then we can have months like September where, in the course of 10 days, we had three of them. Two of them, we were unsuccessful to resuscitate them, and the third one, we worked. So that's pretty neat. We did deploy the Lucas on all three, so we got some use out of that, which is great. It is definitely a useful piece of equipment, and everyone, the firefighters, is very appreciative of it. So going forward, that's something that we are going to look at purchasing. So right now, we still have the loaner, but looking to purchase one in the future. And then, your personnel, I had an update out there that we had Montana Farr join our fire department as a fire cadet. She is already certified as an EMT, so she will not have to go through the medical training. She's already accomplished there. And we have her signed up for the auto coming fire academy starting in January. So that will run January through May. And then along with that, I'll probably report on it next month, but we also did just hire another cadet. And we've been doing a little bit of advertising to try to get some more people to bolster our numbers. So we have a young man that will be starting probably in about two weeks. And not sure when he'll take the academy. He has to go through both fire and medical. And then we are also actively pursuing, trying to find a few more people we got, so...
So what's your count number right now?
So our number's a little lower than what we'd like it to be. We're in the lower teens for personnel staffing. But we still have a good crew that can respond to the calls. It's just that it spreads us a little thin at times. So are we in a good spot? Yes. Can we make it better? Absolutely.
How many do you want?
I would like to be somewhere 18 to 20. Yep. Not all at once. Something that we'd like to stage through the years. But it does take a few years to get people through the academies and then trained up and then get them some experience. So it takes a little time.
Any questions for the Fire Chief from the commission? Back to the Lucas. Will we continue to have the loaner until we purchase one?
He did not set an end date on when he wanted to get it back. Originally, he had set about 90 days, so that would be August, September, and October. So we haven't had that conversation yet. So we are still actively pursuing some grant applications to help us make that purchase.
And how much?
We haven't been successful with a grant application yet. Cost on that is probably right around 20 grand. So we're gonna, I'll work with the city manager, and we'll get creative and figure out what we can do.
Would you attribute the saving of the life to the Lucas this last time?
Yeah.
If we hadn't had that with that person?
There was a couple contributing factors there. One, the auto coming deputy that was on that day, Deputy Haffler, was there very quickly, very quickly determined what it was. Got the patient on the floor, and he started CPR almost immediately. I was right behind him on his heels. I put the AED on him. There was no shock or rhythm. The squad was right behind and put the Lucas on him, which took over for Deputy Haffler then. And life was right there, and they started the drug therapy. And truly, the drug therapy is probably what saved his life. But it's all the components together. And it's everybody working together as a team. The deputy, the firefighters, myself, I mean, that's what it takes.
Quick question on CPR. Outside of the event that requires CPR, when you do CPR, it can cause more physical trauma with lungs and ribs, correct? If done for a while, does this Lucas device prevent that?
With the Lucas, you're still gonna have that potential for damage. This patient, there was no damage, and that's one. But you still had that potential. The adverse side of that is, when somebody's in cardiac arrest, they're already dead. So anything that we do, even if we do do a little damage, is better than the outcome without doing it. We still take care. The Lucas is consistent CPR, which is good, consistent compressions. But not only that, the suction pump that goes on the chest helps lift that chest before the next compression. So now, rather than just waiting for the chest to recoil, you're drawing it up, pulling more blood into the thoracic cavity, so that next compression is more effective. That's where they're seeing the more effective CPR with the Lucas device. So not only are you just pushing and letting it recoil, now you're pushing down, sucking up, pushing down and sucking up. So that's where the Lucas stands out. Any other questions?
If we don't get a grant, are we going to purchase one from the general fund?
We're gonna, it's a great piece of equipment. The goal is to get it. We're gonna crunch the numbers. We're gonna do our best to get it. I think we will get it.
Yep. We'll work through the chain. I'll work with the city manager, work with Andrew. We'll figure it out. We'll probably come back here later this year with some kind of recommendations.
I think we better figure something out. And one thing I'll add on, I saw this piece of equipment working live before we got it. And Chief and I had discussed it, but I saw this in action at an amusement park, which was credited to keeping the gentleman, you know, alive. It is a very valuable piece of equipment, one that I think Chief and I agree on, that we want, we need. We'll figure it out and make happen.
Very well. Thank you, Chief. Keep up the good work. Sergeant? Any other shenanigans you got planned?
I did not plan those shenanigans. Do know some information, investigate it, it's okay. As far as, thinking back on what he was saying, that is the best piece of equipment that can be on that truck. So it saves so many man-hours. If you've ever done CPR for two, three minutes at a time, it's hard.
Do the other departments have similar devices?
Yes. George County and James County. As far as the month of September, it was a good month, two and three calls. We had Safety Night, which was fantastic. That was the last Safety Night meeting. And we also got a brand-new vehicle in the city, 2023 Chevy Talbot. So if you see that rolling around, that's ours right now, and that's our night car. So it's pretty sweet. It's black, it's got all cool stuff on it, so... Also, the biggest topic in the city has obviously been the re-strapping of 32nd Avenue. I have been looking daily to see if we have any crashes, and as of today, we have not in anywhere that the re-strapping has taken place. So I've obviously noticed that traffic has calmed down significantly. Speeds have gone down. I've talked to some neighbors of mine that live on 32nd, and they are just pleased as they can be. So that's what I have for the month of September. If you guys have any questions.
In that time, since it's been there, and you said there's zero crashes, before, on average, how many crashes would you have seen?
We would have had probably four or five. That's our guess, that would be my best guess.
You brought it up. There was 244 traffic accidents from 2016 to 2020 that we got in the data that we see for the study for the 32nd Avenue Re-Rep project. So 244 from 2016 to 2020.
That's a good one. Yeah.
Thank you, Sergeant. Good job. Dave? And you weren't party to the shenanigans either?
I didn't know that as I walked in.
Are you a Michigan fan?
Not a WOBB myself, but we sent enough tuition money to Ann Arbor that I feel like I need to support them. Can you buy your way to being a WOBB? I'll give you a deal. I don't care what it is, no. All right. September was a typical month for my team, which is a relatively quiet month. The department meeting was, as it always is in September, we keep brief from the fair and prepare for Safety Night. Every year, no matter how many years we've been doing this fair, we must come up with something. And so I've got a list to go with the fair board, and we'll see what we can improve for next year. Safety Night, my department thinks it was a success. Although our key takeaway might be, we need more trinkets because we ran out of little goodies fairly quickly. So we'll look a little bit differently next year and try to have an even more robust representation of my department there. And as I mentioned there, the outdoor warning sirens were not tested in October. Technical difficulty not here, but out of the county. Since then, resolved, it was sort of, you know, it was a computer issue that they declared right away. But when we do the tire test, if it doesn't go off pretty much right away, they don't assist because then you start getting too far past the top of the hour. People get confused. The signal goes off at 12:30, they don't know, is this real? Is it a test? And so they tend to abort fairly quick. Any questions?
A lot of good feedback on the Safety Night.
Are they?
A lot of very positive feedback on Safety Night for you and everybody that worked on it.
My teams are talking about how we can figure, so let's see what we get next year.
Any questions from the commission? Hearing none, thank you, Dave. Moving on to item seven in Finance, City Treasurer's Monthly Report. Andrew, you're first up.
All right. Before you, you have the general fund summary, both for August and September. I noticed that they were a month behind before, so I've caught that up so you can have a little bit more relevant information, just so we're not dealing with such old numbers when we come here. So you'll have two months of data there. And then you'll also notice towards the bottom, there's a new, three new lines, fund balance, adjusted fund balance, and revenue percentage. So fund balance is what we currently have in our fund balance. Adjusted fund balance is any budgeted revenues we have yet to incur minus any budgeted expenditures yet to incur. So that way, it gives us a little bit more accurate picture of what our fund balance will be towards the end of the year. Because if we just do actual fund balance, that's gonna show us very high right now because we get all our revenues at the start of the year. And then, most of our expenditures are throughout the year. So that's why I did that adjusted fund balance. So if you have any questions with the calculations for that, I'd be happy to explain further. And then our reserve percentage, the commission has a policy that we keep 20% reserve threshold of our expenditures. So that amount would be $1,042,100. And so right now, we're projected to be, at the end of the fiscal year, at about 86% of our fund balance. And then also, new this month, you'll see governmental activities as the top part. It's our debt report. And so you can see just what our principal and interest payments will be for the year, and it's all the way through 2038. And then, if you go to the next few pages, it gives you more breakdown of each loan. So the 2012 Makatowa Bank Loan is for the DPW building. We currently owe $80,000 on that. And we have four more payments left to complete, 3.5% interest. Next page, we have the 2016 general obligation capital improvement bond for Terror Square. Our current balance there is $3,795,000, and the interest ranges from 4% to 4.5% through the rest of the life. And you can see the next payment for that one is February 1st as well. And then finally, we have our 2021 Union Bank Loan. It's an interest-only loan. The principal is $1,000, or $1,350,000. That is due on 12/15. I'm working with Union Bank to see if we can extend that interest-only payment until we are able to complete the sale. So that way, then we don't have to incur that entire cost before we sell it. So right now, I'm just waiting on Union Bank to get the details together and reply to me about that, what their new interest rate and terms will be for that. Sorry I talked fast, but any questions for me on all this information? Okay, thank you.
We need to have a payment of the...
I'll make a motion for that. But are we gonna talk about the CD reporters or anything to it?
Yeah.
Is there anything to note on that?
And then investment report, I just added a little color to it so you could see the CDs versus bonds different. It's mostly for me to be able to tell them apart easier while I was just glancing at it. There, you can see that I haven't been able to fully balance it, so there's a slight variance there. And that's just gonna be the interest, usually that's zero. But I'm waiting for the auditors to come to zero that out, so next month it will be back to zero, if that's your question with that. So that $5,000, $5,925.74 is just unrecognized interest right now. I want to account for how we deal with those a little bit differently, so I just want to run it past auditor first before I make any changes to our account numbers on that. But no CDs have came, they didn't mature this last month. I think the next one is gonna be November, so next month we'll have a CD maturing.
Thanks for that clarification. And I appreciate the new look on this information, too. It's very helpful to see those comparisons.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is there a point, I see there's like maybe just a couple CDs, one of them I think is still at like .8 or something like that. Is there ever a point at which the interest rate has gone up enough that it's worth taking a penalty and buying into a new CD?
Yeah, there definitely is. I can look at, like, the two of question is the First National Bank of America. It's a five-year term, and it's only at 1%. So that one definitely might be worth breaking early. It's getting access to them right now is what I'm doing. I spent the last couple weeks trying to get on all the accounts. So once I have access to them, then I can research that further. But that is a good point to look into that. I mean, we're quite five times higher now than 1%. So that's a bad one to be locked into. So yes, and then the Financial Northeastern also has a couple low ones, so I will look into that and let you know next month.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's a good point, but in spite of it all, our interest credit is nearly $40,000 right now for the, is that for the year then?
We had a year, no, that, we had a couple quarterly and yearly payments this month, so that's why it's higher than typical.
That's a significant amount, though. So we're making, we're making good buck on $13 million we're sitting on in.
Yes, we're averaging, in the, just the investment pool right now, the 4.7 million that we have in the investment pool, we're averaging 3.61%. And then, in the 7 million that we have with West Michigan Community Bank, it's currently at 2%. But I'm working on that as well because that's quite low. So I put it all in today, and so they're gonna work on a best rate for us for that.
Yeah, I'm sure they're, they love it when we don't want to...
Keep it like that.
Yeah. But we're investigating all options.
Any other questions or discussion?
Thanks, Andrew. I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $332,051.22, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Any anomalies there or anything catching anybody's eyes in the payment of the bills? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeBray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullface?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Grope?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to ACH Funds Distribution, is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of $572,315.42, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? It's kind of a mere formality, Andrew, but we have to do it at every city commission. It's just, as rarely we have anything to discuss about the distribution, but it's something that needs to be kept an eye on. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeBray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullface?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Grope?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, Department of Public Works, recommendation for the parking lot repairs at the DPW facility. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to authorize Osterman Concrete and Construction LLC to perform parking lot repairs at 5713 Balsam Drive per attached estimate 311 in the amount of $54,480.
Second. It's been moved and supported. The DPW supervisor is here. Memo is well-written. Are there any questions for Bob from the commission on the quote and the memo? Pretty straightforward. They, I was surprised how closely they all came in. They were all pretty close. This usually happen like that.
Definitely a needed project.
Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Were you the second? Who was the second?
I was.
Jeff.
Just making sure. All right. Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Grope?
Yes.
Bullface?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeBray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Motion carries. Get the parking lot repaired. Bob, thank you. Before I ask for adjournment, I do see that State Representative Brad Slaw is in the audience. Brad, you appear to address the commission tonight?
If you're on, I'm here. Thanks, Mayor, and council members for allowing me to just come up and give just a little overview. Haven't had a chance to be here in a while. Typically, I'm involved in something, in Lansing still on Tuesday night, so I chose to make a trip over here and get back here tonight. Several things are going on that I thought maybe you guys would be interested in. One is, from my perspective, a really interesting thing. The city of Detroit has come to the legislature and is looking to change the way that they tax property inside the city. I don't know if you guys have heard that or not, but the concept is they've got vacant space that they want developed, and because the vacant space is inexpensive tax-wise, they're looking to shift taxes from dwellings and structures and put it on vacant land. So they're asking the legislature to approve that ability to do that. And it is the mayor's priority to try and get this done. And therefore, Joe Tate, who is the Speaker of the House, who is representative right from downtown Detroit, has got that as one of his top priorities as well. And so it's interesting, this is the first time that the Democrats have come to the Republicans and said, hey, can we negotiate? Can we find some votes? Because we've got some people on our side that are not gonna vote for this. Because it's corporate kind of welfare moving, it's, there's some really weird stuff to it, and so people are saying, meh, I'm not so sure that this is the right thing to do. So they are, have asked us to find some votes for them, and so there's actually a negotiation going on, which is, like I said, the first time that that's happened since we got there in January. They've just kind of run roughshod through from a Democrat perspective, and have been able to, they've had all the people, all the people stay together, and they've been able to vote. They're making it all happen. All of a sudden, they don't have votes at this point in time, and so it changes and brings it back to the legislature. And I think that it's, there's probably enough votes in the Republican side to be able to allow them to make that happen. And if it works, maybe you guys want to think about it. You know, you could swap the way the taxes, not thinking of going there. There are several other things that I thought maybe you'd be interested in. One is the, there is a package of energy bills that are going. Obviously, if you were listening to the governor's what's next thing, she's looking at trying, how can we get to carbon, neutral, energy sources and production by the time we get to 2035? So what's that, 12 years from now? Interesting prospect, when we can't even do all of this stuff today, make sure that we've got energy for everybody and all that kind of thing. So we'll see where that goes, how that energy package works, but there is a whole package of bills that have come to us that are at the Energy Committee, subcommittee, have not actually been voted on yet, but they're bringing them, and we're seeing what we can go with that.
Is she now a proponent of nuclear power? Because one time she wanted to shut all the nuclear power down.
I think she still wants to shut it all down, Mr. Mayor.
But we're hoping...
But she's willing, because there's a plant on the shore of Lake Michigan that is mothballed at the moment, she's saying, well, maybe we could bring that back to life. And so, yeah. priority to try and get this done. And therefore, Joe Tate, who is the Speaker of the House, who is Representative right from downtown Detroit, has got that as one of his top priorities as well. And so it's interesting, this is the first time that the Democrats have come to the Republicans and said, hey, can we negotiate? Can we find some votes? Because we've got some people on our side that are not going to vote for this. Because it's corporate kind of welfare moving. It's, there's some really weird stuff to it. And so people are saying, well, I'm not so sure that this is the right thing to be doing. So they are, have asked us to, to find some votes for them. And so there's actually a negotiation going on, which is, like I said, the first time that that's happened since we got there in January. They've just kind of run roughshod through from a Democratic perspective and been able to, they've had all the people, all the people stay together and they've been able to vote and make it all happen. All of a sudden, they don't have votes at this point in time. And so it's, it changes and brings it to, back to the legislature. And I think that it's, there's probably some enough votes in the Republican side to be able to allow them to make that happen. And if it works, maybe you guys want to think about it. You know, you could swap the way the taxes, not, not make a new one. There are several other things that I, that I thought maybe you'd be interested in. One is the, there is a package of energy bills that are going. Obviously, if you were listening to the governor's what's next thing, she's looking at trying, how can we get to carbon neutral energy sources and, and production by the time we get to 2035? So what's that, 12 years from now? Interesting prospect when we can't even do all of this stuff today and make sure that we've got energy for everybody and all that kind of thing. So we'll see where that goes, how that energy package works. But there is a whole package of bills that have come to us that are, that are at the Energy Committee, Subcommittee, have not actually been voted on yet, but they're bringing them and we're seeing where we can go with that.
Is she, is she now a proponent of nuclear power? Because one time she wanted to shut all the nuclear power down.
I think she still wants to shut it all down, Mr. Mayor.
But we're open...
But she's, but she's willing. Because there's a plant on the shore of Lake Michigan that is mothballed at the moment. She's saying, well, maybe we could bring that back to life. And so, yeah, I...
Let me just...
Is she in or is she out?
I'd just like to know that.
Yes.
You ask him.
One of the other things that is a package of bills, it's, I think, inaccurately called the Reproductive Healthcare Act, is bills that are all linked to the abortion industry and whether you need a license to be able to, to perform abortions, whether you can do that just because you want to. The cleanliness and inspection of facilities and all that kind of stuff is all wrapped up in these set of bills. And Karen Mitzen, who is a Democrat from Detroit, has said, you're not taking care of my seniors. And this package of bills would include Medicaid abortions, Medicaid funded abortions. And she said, those two things are non, non-stop or non-go for me. And so she's put the brakes on it, which has been interesting. Yeah, exactly, Mr. Mayor. And so it's been that, all of a sudden, it's where there was this mad rush to accomplish all these things. Things have kind of slowed down a little bit. We're at a place where we spent, well, from 1 o'clock until 5:00 in the, in the room today and didn't vote on anything. So it's just, it's an interesting time that we weren't having before. And then there's a whole set of election bills that are coming, that they're trying to work on. And I'm concerned about it. I just, I truly believe that it's going to damage long-term the ability for us to have elections that truly have integrity. Several of those bills would allow for the spouses of current serving military folks outside of the United States to be able to email their votes. So the question is, is it secure? Well, first of all, you have to figure out, can I know for certain this is, this person sent it to me, the right person sent it to me? Next would be, can I guarantee that, that electronically this was not changed when it came in somehow? And the answer is, we can't verify those things. It's not possible to, today in today's society to actually verify those, all those things. And then guarantee that once it gets here, it doesn't get changed electronically as well. So we're trying to hold those things back as well. But I think that they'll probably get the votes feeling like they haven't. And with that, if you guys have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer. Or you can get ahold of me in my office or here locally if you'd like.
Any questions from the Commission? That's very, very informative. Thank you, Brad. Nice to see you here tonight. Appreciate you making a special trip to speak to the Commission.
Yeah, and I'll be back in Lansing before you guys, by the time you guys get home.
Thank you, Brad.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Before we go down the dais here to see if there's any additional comments from the Commissioners, I have just a few, and I'll hit them first. 32nd Balsin, Three Lanes. I want to thank the staff and support we've had from the community at large. I think we all know that it was going to be a rough decision. But when you go and make a decision based on facts and not on purely on opinions, the outcome is actually usually going to be pretty good. And follow the science, as they say. And I think we, I applaud everybody here that was, was intelligent enough to be thoughtful and do the right thing. So thank you, and thank you, staff, and that worked so very hard to, to make those changes. And we'll continue to see those changes with the Barry Allen connection and the one light and the other things we have planned for New Holland. New Holland, yeah. And we have those, evens are all in place and we're good to go there in the spring, right?
Evens are in good shape. Actually, we'll find out early November, what the, what the numbers come back for the New Holland left turn lane. And everything's on track, barring one permit from Eagle for ours to the Barry Allen Street realignment.
Urban Hayday, thank you. I think that went off very well. I get a lot of positive feedback. The Commission needs to be aware that on Election Night, which is November 7th, there is a non-mandatory work session, which is a, you can't call it a work session, just call it a tour, a non-deliberation event with the Commission and the Planning Commission to get a full tour of the Hudsonville Public Schools new high school. If there's anybody in the staff that care to join us, you're most welcome to, I'm sure. But Doug Vander Jack has graciously offered to give us a tour of the facility as it's now coming to completion. And those of us that have walked through it when it was, when it was in construction, I think we're pretty excited about the value that this is bringing to the community at large. It's a, it's a huge, huge addition to the community. Hudsonville Flats is progressing. Here again, I'm sure you'll update us in the weekly with any other details there.
Yeah, we're working with, the developers working with consumers, with some power logistics, working with staff regards to some power poles in that area too. And, and one thing we're keeping in mind is the future of the downtown as a whole, as future developments come, making sure that any money or time is being spent on this, that we're looking bigger picture outside of the moment. But I did talk to Scott Gierlings, I think, early last week. And outside of that hiccup, things, things are going well.
Thank you. Tobin?
Nothing to add.
Dave?
My family really enjoyed Urban Hayday, so thanks for bringing that up. It was a great time for us. Thank you.
You want to go last?
Yeah.
Larry?
I'd like to echo what Tobin said. Welcome, Andrew, and appreciate the additional information on the reports. It's, it's great. Also, I think, I think I see Mike here. And thank you for your years of service. There was a celebration for him last evening. And he's put in a number of years here in service in our Fire Department. And thank you for all your time and effort. Many times, people get overlooked or not acknowledged because it's, it's tough at times to wake up in the middle of the night and, and go on a call. And I know few of your officers have had to go a few times during the night of recent. So thank you for your years of service.
Thanks for that. Nothing. Jeff?
Welcome, Andrew.
I need the Department heads wish to address us for one last moment. And I think Phil, I will let you close the session and ask for these.
Thank you. Just to let you all know, my wife and I are moving. We're at that stage of life where it's time to move on to the next thing. So we found a new place to live. We looked and looked and looked, tried to find something in Hudsonville, could not. So we're moving sometime within the next month or so. So this is likely my last Commission meeting. This is the best Commission I've been part of. This is the best group. And Larry can, Larry knows this too, but it hasn't always been this good. The current City Manager and his predecessor, communication outstanding. Ty Choice crappy. Communication, very good. Tyler, you know, we love you. But seriously, it hasn't been this good. And I've worked with and been privileged to serve with a lot of good people.
How many years?
Men and women. 16 years. Before that, I was on the Planning Commission for a few years. We've had good staff here. We still have good staff here. I've learned a lot from many people I've served with. Greg Stegenga, Steve Zeiterbein, past members. Learned a lot from Teresa Coystro, current mayor. Thank you. I think we made a pretty good team. Some of you don't know this because you haven't had the history, but Mark's transparency on this, in this group, it hasn't always been this way. And his transparency is, it's appreciated and it's appropriate. And I've truly loved that about you, that that's you. You are transparent. Everybody knows the game plan going in. And it's not four against three or something like that.
No hidden agendas here.
Correct. And that has not always been the case in my 16 years. And I love that about this group. So, yeah, I will be around for at least a few more weeks, see what I see in the next work session too. But I think we're in a good spot. We're in a really good spot. There's a lot of cool things going on in Hudsonville right now. Big shoes to fill across the, across Chicago Drive at the library too. That's be the next big one. Yeah, it's, it's been a good run. And I've, I've really, really, really enjoyed it. And I think you, you have to know when to, when to walk away too and not to overstay your welcome. And I think that applies to politicians and clergy. So, and I'm not, I'm not the latter. So, yeah, it's, it's been good. And I've really, really enjoyed. It's me, you, her, newer. I think of that, doing the mission statement with the two of you, that was one of my memories. I'll take with me, so.
You can ask your chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments for, for Phil before I ask for the adjournment?
We have been uniquely privileged, though. Unique. Sometimes you live a moment and don't know it. And we have lived a tremendous moment these last few years.
Yeah. The one staff member that I really need to call out is Bob Miller. Because I don't know in future meetings, when he starts talking about lift stations and force mains, if he's going to get any really good questions at him. But Bob, if you need me, just call me. I'm 10 minutes away. I'll come back and hit you with a question anyway, okay, from the audience. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So what?
Mr. Moore?
It's been moved and supported by the two senior-most members on the Commission. And we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.